This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Alicia. Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. We'll open the meeting. And John Condamo is on the line. And he has some updates on Ready and on FEMA. So if you want to take it over, John, and share with everybody even good news.
It is good news, Norma. Thanks. Yeah, actually, on the FEMA project for the replacement of the wave attenuator dock system out there and the repair of the Riverwalk. The good news is, is that we were actually able to finish up our draft engineering report. And Terry and I met with the FEMA site inspector a couple of weeks ago, week before last. And he went through his formal inspection process, which is a big step when it comes to getting these projects approved by FEMA. We made a couple of revisions to that report based on that site inspection and expect that that will be in their hands actually tomorrow. And the hope is, is that they won't take too often to get it approved. And we'll be on our way to being able to bid out that project and actually complete what will end up being about a $1,600,000 project to replace that wave attenuator system and repair that Riverwalk. So we're in hopes that that'll be done and we can bid it out sometime this winter and get it all done before next season.
Will some Kinnell Park be on us, too?
Yes, it will. Yes. Yep, that'll be included. And there's also the possibility of doing some repairs to the staving over at Mary Street Dock, but that's yet to be decided pending how the Ready projects come out. Actually, on the Ready side, it's a good segue into those projects. We continue to advance the preliminary designs. And we actually are having some additional investigative work done. There will actually be a barge on site this week. That'll be doing some borings for the Mary Street Dock replacement. So again, that's progressing. And I wanted to give everybody a heads up that we are having a public information meeting via a webinar, of course, these days. But that is next Tuesday evening, the 17th, at 5:30. I know there's a link to it on the website, on the Clayton Village website. So we ask all those that are interested to join us and we'll give some pretty detailed updates on where we stand with all the Ready projects. And again, we're making great progress on those also.
We'll have Joanne put, have Chris put it on Savvy Citizen, too. And it's going to be added in the paper.
Okay, that's good. That's good. And other than that, Norma, I just wanted to make sure everybody, you know, got the good news, especially on the FEMA project. And also hopefully that they can join us next week for our public information.
Oh, sure. We should all be on that. We'll just remind everybody that the FEMA money is a match, 75, and we have 20 and 25, so keep that in mind.
Yep, it is a 75-25. They will reimburse 75% of that cost. My understanding is there has been some discussion, although I don't know where it's going to go, that, you know, there is a possibility that could be reduced some. But again, these days with what's going on with the COVID issue and everything and budgets, I'm not sure I'm hopeful about that. So what we know now is it is a 75% reimbursement program.
Does anyone have any questions for John? If not, mark your calendars, folks, for the 17th to be on that call. It'd be good to see if we get any. I noticed you were being pretty hopeful, had enough for 500 people to call in.
Well, you never know. You never know.
You never know. If you don't have any questions for John, thank you very much. And we'll talk to you before the 17th, I'm sure.
Yep, definitely.
Okay. Thanks, too.
Thank you. Yep.
Kevin's not here. Michelle, do you want to move forward with the police department?
Everything remains status quo. There have been a number of investigations. I noticed the number of mental health interactions have gone up. I'm not sure quite why. Maybe it's the change of season. But that's something to be sensitive to and aware of. They don't seem to be coming necessarily from the house down the street. And I'm not sure if it's the same person over and over again, or if it's a variety of people. But that's all I have.
Kevin's out sick. I did talk to him just a little while ago. And Wednesday's a holiday and he's not coming in tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Michelle? Okay, Terry, you're on.
Hi, everyone. You have a copy of my DPW activity report. We're out taking advantage of this mild weather. The guys are out picking up leaves. I've had several phone calls inquiring about it. We will continue to pick up leaves as long as they're out or until we get a substantial snowfall, whichever may come first. As it's going right now, the leaves are really dropping quickly now. So the boys were out in full force today picking up leaves and they will continue probably throughout the rest of the week. I just wanted a reminder that parking rules are in effect. They started on November 1st. I did put courtesy tickets on some vehicles that were parked towards the end of October. And obviously, it worked because there are like no vehicles anywhere parked downtown. And if there are, there's a straggler here or there. So that definitely worked well. And I'm not sure, I think Kevin has written a few tickets, but nothing substantial. So as long as everybody stays off the road, that'll make our job easy if it ever does snow. I'd like to keep these temperatures all winter, but we all know that that's not going to happen.
Yeah, right. You'd be sad to have your boat out of the water if we do that.
Yeah, put that away too soon, that's for sure. Also on the agenda, I wanted to ask the board's permission to use our floating holiday for the day after Thanksgiving. We typically do that. And I believe, and we are all in agreement, and I'm not sure about the water and sewer department, but if we could get your permission to take that extra day off.
Now, Wednesday is not a regular legal holiday?
This Wednesday. Veterans Day is.
It is. So you won't be working this Wednesday either?
We will be here Wednesday.
Okay. Okay. I've got a couple of things, Terry. There won't be any official tree lighting this year, but you're going to decorate the tree, right?
Yes, we are. And we're hoping if we can get caught up on leaves, we may attempt it towards the end of this week, being the weather so nice. We may start decorating the tree at Frank Park and doing some things down there. Hopefully, that's if we can get to it after leaf pickup. Guys are hunting and I'm a little short-staffed right now, but everyone but one will be back tomorrow, so hopefully we'll get caught back up here.
The chamber had a suggestion to make it the tree red, white, and blue so that they could use the white lights that would honor all the citizens of the year because they didn't have the normal citizen of the year function. And they made all first responders and frontline people and they were trying to make something. So that would be a way to acknowledge them. And the blue would be for law enforcement and the red, nobody's come up with anything specific for that, but maybe this is a good time to put Christmas and everything together and make it a red, white, and blue Christmas.
That sounds good. And I will touch base with Tricia at the chamber and see what they have for lights.
Yeah, she said they had a lot of red, white, and blue lights, so.
Great, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, it would be. And you're going to burn the train down?
And the train is at the shop. We've been waiting for a rainy day to do some painting on it. We don't have Bobby here any longer to kind of do those kinds of things for us. We do miss him. But it's at the shop and we will start painting on that. It shouldn't take long. And I would bet the train will be at the station next week sometime.
Good. I think we've got to try to keep the tradition as close as we can in spite of everything. And the news today wasn't good, like we're in for the worst two months of the whole thing. So we just got to stay focused and positive on it. Terry, I think you told me, but I didn't write it down, but the decorations for the three entrance signs, are they up at the village office?
Yes, they are. The guys got them several weeks ago. All you've got to do, or Laura, just have her give me a shout and I'll make sure she gets them.
Okay, all right.
If she needs help, just let me know.
Okay, sounds good. Does anyone have any questions for Terry? Thanks a lot, Terry.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Megan?
Good evening.
We do, you're ready.
I'm ready. Have you guys had a chance to review the OBG's final amendment, number 11? It was a last-minute thing that we got late Friday and early this morning. The funding agency, Rural Development, gave their approval. I wasn't sure if you guys had had a chance to even look at it yet. We kind of snuck it on the agenda last minute.
I've looked at it and we've had O'Brien and Garrett for five years. I'm ready to part company with them.
Close them out. And we looked at it. Everything, you know, looks good to go. They're issuing a credit for unused funds, so that'll go back into our contingency fund as available monies to try and come up with some way to use here in short order so we can get this project closed by the end of the year. But Terry's been great and been sending me a bunch of ideas and we're waiting on approval from Rural Development on some of them. So I would like to request the village's approval for this OBG credit of $24,639.95.
Would somebody make that motion, please?
I would.
Nancy? Michelle? Okay, Michelle, can I have a second, please?
Nancy, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Oh, okay. You're good to go, Megan.
Beautiful. And I guess along the same lines of the water project, we did have the Department of Health come in last Tuesday for official filter plant inspection. Everything went very well. They had concerns. They were happy with everything. The guys answered all their questions without many issues. And they're going to give us our certification to officially operate, giving their blessing now that it seems like we got a handle on the filter problems and everything else. So that was definitely a step in the right direction as far as positive water plant news. We still have to schedule Castor to come back and revisit filter number one with their new, or newly proposed over design. It worked on number two, haven't had any issues, no leaks, no problems. So we're confident moving forward on that for the last filter. Other than that, last week, the guy for, on the wastewater end, the guys were able to clean out our chlorine contact tanks, took advantage of the nice weather and they were able to get it done. They've started the process of winterizing all of our sewer pump stations and the wastewater plant for winter because, as you guys already said before, this weather's not going to last forever. You know, the cold's coming, so we're getting ready, but everything else has been pretty standard as far as wastewater goes.
I'm not sure, Megan, at the last meeting, we brought to everybody's attention, we got the speediest permit for five years, so we're good there.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's a great accomplishment to get that.
Yes. And they have interim limits for while we're doing the wastewater treatment plant project. So we're going to be monitoring, our monitoring did change slightly, and that'll be starting this December. Overall, it was pretty straightforward. Do you guys have any?
No word from T-Mobile?
No, and no word from Joe either. I've tried to touch base with them twice as far as what he recommends us do. We sent him the lease and we sent him the letter. And he said, you know, based on what the lease says, are we doing an insurance claim or are we sending him some other type of legal action letter to go against them? And I haven't gotten a response yet, so I'll try again this week, but we'd still definitely like to move forward with that.
Does anyone have any questions for Megan? Is Eric back to work?
No, when I touched base with him on Friday, he said he was still waiting for his case number from the workers' comp folks. And it looks like he got that today perhaps. And he needed that before he could schedule an appointment with a doctor to get released back to work. He said he was feeling overall pretty good. He was getting a little stir-crazy at the house. So other than that, he thinks he should be, hopefully be coming back sometime this week, but it's just going to depend on that doctor's release and when he can get that doctor's appointment scheduled. So he's still off for now.
Okay, sounds good. Anything for Megan, anyone? If not, Megan, I guess you're all set. Thank you for your input.
Wonderful, thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, on the consent agenda, do we have any questions or changes anybody wants to make? If not, can we have a motion for items one, two, three, and, yeah, one, two, and three?
So moved.
In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Second from Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If not, all three items are carried. On the capital projects, any questions? If not, can we have a motion to approve the capital projects, item number four?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Steve, do I have a second?
I'll second, Nancy.
Nancy? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we've got item four taken care of. Joanne, you're on.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the annual meeting is set for December 7th. And I'll be putting the public notice in the TI sun, if that's okay with everyone?
Yeah, we have to do that, yeah. And it's at 5:30, just like a regular meeting.
Yep, 5:30. So that's coming up. And then I have the resolution for the Clayton Floral Society planting shrubs in front of the Lions Field fence. And we'll need to do a roll call vote for that. Everybody received that resolution, right? Because I think I forgot and then sent it out today.
Yep. Yeah, good.
I have a question first. Is that going to block the view of people who stand outside the fence?
Yeah, it's in the state right of way. That's why they've got to have our approval to do it.
Well, Michelle, I wouldn't think so because they're hydrangeas.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, Norma, her question was, was it going to block anybody's view watching activities? But I wouldn't think it would have anything, any problems. So I would make that motion.
And do we have a second? We've got to do a roll call vote.
Right.
Please.
Mayor Zimmer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, Michelle Grabowski?
Yes.
Trustee Hyde?
Yes.
Trustee Bedore?
Yes.
And Trustee Kellogg?
Yes.
So who, Nancy made the motion. Who's going to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Joanne, do you have an email address for Debbie Hunter? I've got, I can drop it off in the morning. I've got.
Okay.
Okay, because we should get that toy so she can work with DOT and get her project moving forward.
Yep, I'll do that.
One other thing, Joanne, while everybody's, we're talking about the clerk. You were asked to have a couple of days off at Thanksgiving time. Was it the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Wednesday before and the day after, which is a floating holiday on Friday.
So I think we should put an ad in the paper that the clerk's office will be closed those three days. And, you know, put it on the webpage and on Savvy Citizen.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for Joanne? Alicia, do you want to talk about these policies that we're trying to get through? What we want to do? Alicia?
She must not be there.
Okay, well, all three of these, we got the information that Alicia sent out. She's accumulated all the ones that we have. They were in all different places, different years. So she thinks that the best way for us to move forward to get them brought up today is to accept the ones that we have, all three of these, and then establish a committee that will review all of this stuff so that we can have one comprehensive operational one. The employee handbook is pretty well draft formed on. And then that fund balance, Tina was going to take another look at that. My understanding was she was going to wait until after the AUD was finished this year, but I didn't hear anything back. I talked to her Friday and I haven't heard anything. So, but that's one more thing we've got to get done. So on the committee side, if we could get some, we need two people to volunteer. And I thought perhaps we would extend an invitation to trustee Joe Christman if he would like to participate in this because on the 7th of December, you know, he'll be part of the board. So I don't know. Are you on tonight, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this on Saturday, I guess, and you did express an interest, and I'm not sure if you still think so.
Yes, yes, I would love to.
Okay, so if, Joe, we need one more committee person. Somebody want to step up?
Norma, I would, I would be happy to be on the committee.
Okay, so they've got Nancy and Joe, and then Alicia and myself. And we can put this together and get it over with because it's been hanging up there way too long. Okay, so is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Sounds perfect.
Okay, so we're done with that. Nancy, do you have anything you want to report on?
No, I don't. I think the only thing I would say in reference to the library is they are open now for people to go in at any time. Yes. They were doing just reservations or appointments only, but now I believe that they're open full-time. So it seems to be, you know, they're not getting flacked with people, but it seems to be doing very well. So, yes, that's all I can think of. Things have been pretty quiet, which is nice.
Yeah, it is. Michelle, do you have anything?
The next chamber meeting is this Thursday at 4 o'clock.
Okay.
And the senior center is still closed and I haven't sat down with the police chief in a bit.
Okay. Today I had an opportunity to talk to a student from Coastal Carolina that's from Alexandria Bay, actually. And he's home because they've had the opportunity not to go back to school and they could do it remotely. He's in his last semester. He's doing a journalist report on the historic project downtown. He'd done quite a lot of research on it and so he just wanted some extra information. And he said he would send us the report when he got done with it. So it was kind of interesting that a student from ABAY came here to talk about the historic district of ours, so that was nice. And the good news from CLDC is we got a $500,000 grant probably four years ago, anyway, and we've never been able to build that back for anything because 50% of the work had to be done. So we've met that threshold and beyond. So Christie sent them an invoice for $364,892. So that'll be a reimbursement on that grant. So that's good news. That's the first one we've been able to do on all the grants, so get that money coming back. And we had a call from the Cemetery Association. They would like eight or 10 people to meet there on the 24th at 7:00. Would that be a huge issue? I know you don't want people using the building, but people don't have their home big enough that they normally do and they want to be able to social distance, wear masks, do everything, so.
I think my only concern is extra work for Terry and his guys, but Terry's constantly candid.
Well, we have to sanitize anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think eight or 10 as a cap that they should.
I don't know, courtesy more than anything else, but they do need a place to meet. So I told them I would ask, and if they can, I'll go up and unlock the, it's on a Tuesday night, I think, so I can do that and just let them use it and then the police department can close it up.
Yeah, as long as it's not more than 10 people, I don't see a concern.
Yeah, okay. Is everybody else okay with it?
Sure.
Yes, I'm fine with that. And this is just like a once-a-year meeting, Norma?
Yes, it is. That's all it means, once a year.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. On the AUD, the draft is done. There's only one question left for Tina to work with. She's working with Larry Petrie from the Controller's Office. They don't know just how to account for the money for the private properties downtown. They have to pay for the conversion. And so they're trying to figure out what box to put that in. As soon as they get that done, that will be ready to go. And last year, we didn't get a file until December, so I think we're a little bit ahead of that. And one day last week, I got a call from the Controller's Office. And then we got a follow-up on how this will all happen. They are going to do an audit in Clayton. It will be from June 19th until current. And it'll start sometime after Thanksgiving. So tonight or in the morning, I'll send out to the board the protocols and all the things that, you know, the expectations, and most of it will be done virtually. The actual auditor lives in Syracuse, so he can run up here if he needs something. So on Friday, Alicia and Tina and I kind of talked about it so we can, and Tina's been involved in these for a while. And to be quite honest with you, I think we're in pretty good shape for now, much better than we would have been if they'd showed up three years ago. So they will be on site sometime after Thanksgiving. That's going to happen. And that is, oh, and on the village park over here, the, you know, we did the upgrades to it and kind of spiffed it up in 2015. But the tire, what, issue that they had over there, those huge tires the kids get coughing, that was put in in the 80s when it was originally done. It's referred to as a tire trench. And Terry's has, the tires are put into concrete and then they rot and then you've got to try to pull them out. And they took another one out this fall. So I'm trying to work with Leathers to come up with something that could replace it. I think we would be able to find some funding locally to help rather than let the park get rundown like we did the last time. Trying to put a plan together to replace that tire trench with something else. As soon as I get something from Leathers, I'll send it out and see what people think. But I hate to see piece by piece have a fall apart. And there will be no holiday party this year on December 9th. So don't play them that. You've got an open night there to do something fun. And that's also the same night, the night is the joint town assembly meeting. So mark your calendars to tune into John Candino's presentation on the 17th. So he's going to go into depth of that with the public, so everybody will be on board. Does anyone else have anything? On the board, does anyone in the public that's on the line have something?
Actually, Mayor.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, Joe, I just wanted to say congratulations to Nancy and Joe. Nancy on her reelection and Joe on his election to the board.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Yeah, this is Joe. Could you explain that grant again? You were breaking up when you were talking about it.
And you're breaking up now. Run that again. What do we got?
Could you explain that grant again? You were breaking up when.
For the state, the $500,000?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, we got that about the same time we got the million. But there's been a lot of things that you have to do to get qualified to get your reimbursement and we've met the criteria now and that's the $364,000 that we're going to get. So that'll be good. Because if you look at the capital projects, there's some holes in it because we keep paying out money and we have to wait for the money to come back in to replace it, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Jeremy? Okay, thank you. Everybody's happy to go home?
I am home.
Everybody.
Stay safe, everybody. I think it's going to be a nightmare.
Yeah, take care.
Thank you. Good night.